Good evening and welcome to the first of three meetings tonight. My name is Dennis Buckley, Mayor of the City of Beach Grove. And at this time, we will convene our Board of Sanitation meeting for Monday, January the 2nd, 2018. In lieu of a roll call, I will ask each participant to introduce themselves, beginning on my far right.
Dave Harrison.
Dan McMillan, Clerk Trezor.
Craig Wiley, City Attorney.
Sandy Seward.
Thank you, Board. You've been presented a printed copy of the minutes of the previous meeting dated Monday, December the 18th, 2017. Floor is open for any questions, comments, or corrections.
I have none, thank you.
I have none.
No questions, comments, or corrections. I'll ask for motion to approve the minutes as presented.
I'll make said motion.
I second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 I also vote aye and the motion carries. Thank you, Board. This evening, Board, you have two pages of wastewater claims in the amount of $518,058.11. The floor is open for questions or comments.
I have none, thank you.
I have none.
No questions or comments, I'll ask for a motion to approve the wastewater claims dated January the 2nd, 2018, in the amount of $518,058.11.
Make said motion.
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I also vote aye and the motion carries. We have no unfinished business to carry over from the previous meeting. We have no new business this evening. Comments from Board members?
I have none, thank you.
I have none.
No comments, I'll ask for a motion to adjourn the meeting.
Make said motion.
Second.
Meeting is adjourned at 6:02 PM. We will convene the Board of Public Works and Safety meeting in five minutes. Thank you. Good evening and welcome to the second of three meetings tonight. My name is Dennis Buckley, Mayor of the City of Beach Grove. And at this time, we will convene our Board of Public Works and Safety meeting for Tuesday, January the 2nd, 2018. In lieu of a roll call, I will ask each participant to introduce themselves, beginning on my far right.
Dave Harrison.
Dan McMillan, Clerk Trezor.
Craig Wiley, City Attorney.
Sandy Seward.
Thank you, Board. You have been presented a printed copy of the minutes of the previous meeting dated Monday, December the 18th, 2017. The floor is open for any questions, comments, or corrections.
I have none, thank you.
I have none.
No questions, comments, or corrections, I'll ask for a motion to approve the minutes as presented.
I'll make said motion.
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 I also vote aye and the motion carries. Thank you, Board. This evening, Board, you have 23 pages of claims, corporate claims, in the amount of The floor is open for any questions or comments.
And I have none, thank you.
I have none.
If there's no questions or comments, I'll ask for a motion to approve the corporate claims dated January the 2nd, 2018, in the amount of $662,921.85.
I make said motion.
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 I also vote aye and the motion carries. Thank you, Board. We have no unfinished business carried over from the previous meeting. We have two items under new business tonight, and the first is handicap parking permit renewals. We have 25 this evening. So instead of doing individually, we will do them as one, just one motion and one approval. So I'll defer to the clerk for any comment on any of these.
Yes, want me to read them?
Sure.
At that time, okay. The first one is Julie Edgecombe. That's renewal. All these are renewals unless I tell you different. Deborah Morgan. Paulette Vanderbeil. Linda Murdock. Pamela Sue Bell. Michael Johnson. Jaclyn Rush. Barbara Thomas. Lily and Persinger. Got a few others here. Linda Gray. And James McGuire. That's all on my left.
Board, have any questions or comments?
I have none.
Yes, I know I didn't do her, and she particularly called me. Hyla Spieth. Any others?
I don't know if I read those two or not.
Jerry Turner. And James McGuire, I already read.
Yep.
No. Bob Keg.
There's not any questions or comments, I'll ask for a motion to approve all of the handicap renewal permits presented this evening.
I'll make said motion.
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I also vote aye and the motion carries. We have one other item of new business this evening, pay increase for the police department. Chief?
Dear Mayor and Board, I'm requesting a pay increase for Tina Lance. Tina's a PAO, and I'd like to increase her pay to $13 an hour. That would make her equal to the other two part-time PAOs that I have, that were just new hires.
And that's, what does the salary order is?
It goes up to $15 an hour.
Okay. Okay. And is she, is she on the job now?
Yes. She's been with us a couple of years, but she took about a six-month leave of absence because of a full-time job.
Oh, okay. Any comments, questions for Board members?
It's in your budget for eighteen.
Yes.
Dave, you have any comments or anything?
Yep.
If not, I'll ask for a motion to approve the chief's request.
I'll make said motion.
I second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I also vote aye and the motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
Brad, can you update us on today's activities? And as far as trash pickup and, and what's going on out of DPW as far as, just get a general update?
We're on schedule to continue trash pickup for this week, despite the cold temperatures. We usually give the guys the option and offer additional trucks to warm them up that follow the trash trucks. When it's this cold, we pretty much put everybody on trash. So they didn't want to get behind. I didn't either, but I always like to hear if they have a different opinion, and they were all unanimous in their desire to pick trash up and stay on schedule. And we let them take off when they were done, and we were happy that they were willing to work in these cold temperatures. I found out mid-morning that Indianapolis had canceled trash, so kudos to the Beach Grove guys for going out there and getting it done.
Any, how's the equipment holding up?
Good. We had one hose that broke on one of the newer Packers, and we have that old truck that's a 2000, so it's 17 years old. And the minute you roll it out in temperatures like this, it's not usually a good reaction. So it immediately had an issue with something breaking. Matt got the newer truck back out when that happened, so we were, maybe they were down 15, 20 minutes maximum, and they were back out. So.
No plowing of the equipment?
It's all good. Couple hiccups, little things that happened that have all been fixed since then. Yeah, anytime you roll them out with spreaders and plows, you're going to have different things happen when you encounter different manholes and different things around the city. But overall, all the issues were minimal, and they've all been addressed. So we're, we're at full capacity at this point, and I've ordered some salt, waiting for that to come in anxiously, because we've gone through quite a bit. You find that you go through probably as much salt with a half-inch or three-quarter inch snow than you do with a six-inch snow, because you're trying to fight it with the salt. But so far, so good.
I think one of the things I'm looking forward to is, in the spring thaw, you know, each year, the more roads we do, the less problems we have with chuck holes.
That is true.
And I'm anxious to see how it is this spring, so.
Yeah, there's very few bad roads left. We've got most of them taken care of.
Any questions for DPW?
No.
Good job.
Thank you. The guys have done a nice job.
It's nice to have our roads cleared when we need to get out.
Appreciate that.
It's not delayed either. They're done right now, so thank you for that.
Yeah, thanks. Thank you.
Chief, you have anything you want to add, from the fire department perspective?
We had an issue with Engine 56, with the heater. Global came down today, had it fixed, so it's back up and going. Again, like Brad says, one of our main concerns is our personnel. Just to make sure they're safe out in the cold temperatures. Fire Department, they have a very taxing job, just like Police Department, all of public safety. And we just try to do the best for our employees during these rough times, and we greatly appreciate all your support.
Chief, anything you want to add?
Don't leave your car running unattended.
Do you have any problems today?
We didn't have any problems today, but we've had them in the last couple of weeks.
Can you brief us on a couple of crimes that have happened over the last week? I'm thinking about the Expo and Laser, or not the Little Caesars, is that right?
Laser Tag, which is a business inside Expo Bowl, and then a pizza delivery man, was all in one crime, and then, I'll fill you in on that. That was a, reported as a robbery from the Laser Tag, and it turned out that an employee assisted the would-be robber, so that's actually a theft. And all but one that's involved in that has been arrested, and a warrant for the other one. And that same group that day went to an apartment complex and robbed a pizza delivery guy and took his vehicle. And that, all those subjects are known and have been arrested or turned over to prosecutor's office. The other one was Little Caesar's Pizza, a, reported as a sort of kidnapping, carjacking that left the pizza place, and then the suspect got out around 7th and Cleveland, 7th and Churchman. Detective came out and found out that it was actually an employee theft, is all false reporting. The employee stole the money and made up the story, and that employee was with a ex-employee. They had gone in cahoots and devised this scheme, which was all false. And the employee bought a few gifts and other personal items for that person. Little Caesar's had a little bit of money, but they did get some back. So we're waiting for the prosecutor to follow through on their end.
Chief, or Rob, did either one of you want to talk about the post office? It's getting a lot of play, and there, I got a phone call on it this evening, and...
Beach Grove Post Office received a package around the 28th, and the package was opened, and it was leaking small amounts of mercury. The post office employees allegedly wrapped the package back up and had it delivered. In this process, it left mercury in the post office itself, and the Health Department came out, and they had to have a team come out to decon the equipment, check on the employees. We had one employee from the Fire Department go over. He actually had pretty good trace amounts of mercury on his boots, which had to be disposed of. So we're after seeking reimbursement on those. But as of now, the update I have is that the Health Department is in the process of ensuring everything is cleaned up, and they have gone and traced back the origin of the package and where it was delivered to. That's my update. I apologize, I just came back in town today. I've been out for several days. So Jim, if you have anything additional?
That's pretty much it. Like I said, we were called by the post office to go over and do an investigation on the mercury, and we immediately contacted the Health Department, because it's certainly in their, their purview to take care of. So they took over the scene after that, like Chief said. Our employee did get a minor exposure on his protective clothing that we're going to have to get replaced. But other than that, once they took over, they closed it down and started the cleanup process. So it sounds to me like there was no major exposures to anyone else, so that's a good thing.
I, I know the building's still closed, and I don't know if it's related to that or if there's something else going on. I know people call here, and we had one person call here irate today, wanting to know why the, you know, the post office isn't open, and it's out of our control.
Yes, that's, that's between the federal government and the Health Department. That kind of excludes us.
Anything else, guys tracking or anything? Cars, radios?
Our radios are in. We're waiting for the PSC to program them and get a, we have 24 in. That's what was paid for, and waiting to get those on to the road officers.
Board members have any comments, questions?
No, thank you.
I have none. I'm glad you guys talked tonight. That way I keep my record at 6:18. I was sweating it for a little bit there.
All right. That concludes new business. Any comments for Board members?
Just want to just reiterate that how much our employees of the city are appreciated. A lot of us don't have to be trucking out in 10 below zero weather, and all of you guys and your staff do, and it's very much appreciated. Know that all you have to do is pick up a phone call and you guys will be there, so thank you for that.
Dave, any?
No.
Comments? If not, I'll ask for a motion to adjourn the meeting.
Make said motion.
Second.
Meeting is adjourned at 6:17 PM.
6:23.
6:23 PM. We will reconvene on Tuesday, January the 16th. The City Council convenes at 7:00. Good evening and welcome to the third and final meeting tonight. My name is Dennis Buckley, Mayor of the City of Beach Grove. And at this time, we will convene our City Council meeting for Tuesday evening, January the 2nd, 2018. In lieu of a roll call, I will ask each participant to introduce themselves, beginning on my left.
Buddy Temple, Councilman-at-Large.
Jim Burris, Council-at-Large.
Dave Harrison, Councilman District 5.
Dan McMillan, Clerk Trezor.
Craig Wiley, City Attorney.
Peter Mascari, Council District 2.
Elizabeth Lampin, Council District 1.
Chris Duffer, Council District 3.
Thank you, Council. Kevin Day is under the weather this evening and won't be with us tonight. Please rise for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which I stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Couple special presentations this evening. The first one is a proclamation, National School Choice Week, January 21st to January 27th, 2018. Whereas all children in the City of Beach Grove should have access to the highest quality education possible, and whereas City of Beach Grove recognizes the important role that an effective education plays in preparing all students in the City of Beach Grove to be successful adults, and whereas quality education is critically important to the economic vitality of the City of Beach Grove, and whereas the City of Beach Grove is home to a multitude of high-quality public and non-public schools, from which parents can choose for their children, in addition to families who educate their children in the home. And whereas educational variety not only helps the diversity of our economy, but also enhances the vibrancy of our community. And whereas the City of Beach Grove has many high-quality teaching professionals in all types of school settings, who are committed to educating our children. And whereas, School Choice Week is celebrated across the United States by millions of students, parents, educators, school, and organizations, to raise awareness of the needs for effective educational options. Now therefore, I, Dennis B. Buckley, do hereby recognize January 21st through January 27th, 2018, as the City of Beach Grove School Choice Week, and I call this observance to the attention of all of our citizens. And I'll file that respectively. Next order of special presentation is, the Council is due to elect a President Pro-Tim for 2018. And at this time, I will defer to our current President Pro-Tim to go through the order. Buddy?
Well, I believe at this time, we would take nominations for those that would be interested in serving in that position.
I would nominate Buddy Temple.
I'll second.
Are there nominations for anyone else? With that, I ask for a motion that nominations be closed.
Make motion nominations be closed.
At this time, we will call for a vote individually, beginning on my far right. Chris?
Yes.
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 Yes. Yes.
Let the record show six to nothing for Counselor Temple. So Buddy will be the President Pro-Tim again for 2018.
Mayor, it says here that I'm not, it would vote for me if I would not talk much. So that's part of the condition, so. Yeah, I'll make that.
We're going to have the ballgame on as soon as Tim gets the signal worked out.
Good, sounds good.
All right. Congratulations, Buddy.
Thank you, Mayor.
The next order of business is, you have been presented a printed copy of the minutes of the previous meeting dated December the 4th, 2017. The floor is open for any questions, comments, or corrections.
On the first page where it says Mayor's Youth Council, it says a student gave a report. Maybe next time, we could just add the student's name.
They don't give them to us, and that's the issue there.
Oh, really?
Yeah. I went out before and asked different ones before time, but for the most part, we don't get...
They don't want their name to appear in there?
Well, I'm not saying that. I'm just saying they, probably when they come up here, maybe we should ask their name.
Okay. Yeah, because I thought it was be, I mean, if, if a young person is going to take the time to be on the council and then come up and give a report, his name ought to be in the minutes.
I agree.
That was my thinking.
Any other questions, comments, or corrections before approval? If not, I'll ask for a motion to approve the minutes as presented.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes.
I'll second a motion.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those oppose, the same sign. The motion carries. Counselor, we're due for public comments. Anyone sign up to speak this evening?
Not this evening.
Then we will move to committee reports. There is no ABC report for this evening. There's been no activity in December. The Greenscape Commission report, the clerk passed it out to each one of you prior to the meeting. Matt is here from the Greenscape Commission. I don't know if he wanted to say anything or not. But I do want to pass on a couple of notes to you. The first one is that the city did apply for some funding through the Greenscape Commission, and Beth sent that off before the end of the year. And Beth Berg has been instrumental in the Greenscape Commission. Her term has come to an end. She is a Parks Board appointment, and she has decided to no longer serve. So I want to publicly thank her for all she has done for the Greenscape Commission. So I ask that that be put in the minutes. I didn't see a report from the Compliance Division. You have a public safety report. I asked the principal of the high school not to report this month, because school's been out. They'll come back in February, so the only pending report this evening is the financial report, and I'll defer to the clerk.
Good evening, Councilors, and Happy New Year. In December, we paid the final payment on the tax anticipation warrant. I can't tell you how happy that made me. The interest on that loan for the year was over $33,000. We also paid a payment on the senior center bus and on the 2015 A revenue bond. Per the 2017 budget, we transferred the last payment of the return on investment, the ROI, from the sewage to the corporation. The total pilot payment was taken in July. In 2017, we received a total revenue from sewage to the general fund for an ROI payment and $142,000 in pilot payment. These are profits the corporations receive for running the sewage business, and they supplement the budgets in the general fund, such as fire, police, parks, and all other general fund budgets. In 2013, we received revenue payments of $706,892 in return on investment and $142,196 in pilot revenue payments. In 2014, we received revenue payments of $1,106,892 in return on investment and $174,196 in pilot revenue payments. In 2015, we received revenue payments of $257,804,000 in ROI and $142,196 in pilot revenue payments. In 2016, we received revenue payments of $706,892 in the ROI and $142,196 in pilot revenue payments. In 2017, we received revenue payments of $706,892 and $142,196 in pilot revenue payments. In 2018, we have budgeted return on investment revenue payments of $706,892 and pilot payments of $142,196. Our property tax money came in and was down considerably compared to the fall of 2016 and the spring of 2017. In 2016, the difference between the spring and fall distributions were approximately $150,000. Of that, RDC was down $73,000. This year, the difference between spring and fall distributions were almost $400,000. Of that, the RDC distributions were down approximately $124,000. I transferred money into the Churchman Avenue sidewalk project, which is temporary loan from the general fund until the LPA settlements come in. The balance of stormwater funds as of 12/31/2017 was $231,618. However, there was claim on the docket tonight for $87,263.84. Community events can be added free of charge by emailing me at dan.mcmillan@beachgrove.com. Thanks to the website volunteers who continue to keep it updated at no cost to the taxpayers. Financial reports, debt services, bank balances, and more can be found on the city website at www.beachgrove.com. The bank balance listed below, the corporation has $4,715,025.76, and the only other bank The bank balance listed below, the corporation has $4,715,025.76, and the only other bank statement I had as of today was the debt service because it doesn't change, it was As always, if you have any questions, my door is always open, thank you. Respectfully submitted, Dan McMillan, Clerk Treasurer, City of Beach Grove. I also wanted to let everybody know, I have the Form 22s that was sent out by the Marion County Auditor for our tax distribution, and how it's divided up, so you could go through that and look at that. And also, I have the final payment on our tax anticipation warrant. This was, as you can clearly see, it was not due until Friday, December 29th, 2017. I paid this off on Wednesday, December 27th, 2017. A total amount due of $665,236.46. I wire transferred, and I put a copy of that in here. But the significance of this was, our payment wasn't due until the 29th, the bond bank held over $2 million of our tax money on the 28th, and so needless to say, there was a lot of emails written to different people that was involved in this, and within an hour of the bank opening, the next business day, our $2 million plus was in there. So I think it was just poor business on the part of the Indiana Bond Bank. I would recommend never using them again. Previously, we had never had an interest rate above 0.77. This year's interest rate was 2.77, and as you guys know, we have to vote on a tax anticipation warrant previous to knowing what the interest rate is and so forth. But anyway, I thought they handled this very poorly, but if anybody's got any questions, I'd be happy to answer.
Do you think your correspondence made a difference, or do you think they would've tried to go longer, or?
I think the correspondence definitely made a difference, and I think it was just the fact that we're not doing business with them anymore, and I think they were trying to mess with us. Needless to say, that's how they make their money.
Any questions for the clerk?
You're saying they withheld our money?
Over $2 million for a payment.
But our money comes from the state, not through them, how do they get a hold of it?
That's a good question, Chris, I still have not gotten an answer on that. We sent them a payment of $665,000, they hold over $2 million. Under what authority, I guess, would they have the authority to do that?
Do you know, Craig?
I have no idea why they would do that if we're not using, being a bond bank.
I couldn't tell you why, but I know that's happened in the past, I don't know why the reasons are, but.
Do you have a contract where we use them regularly, where that money we transferred to them instead of us?
No, only in default would it go to them. They have some kind of clause that they said, here's what happened, on November the 22nd, I signed the paper, sent it back to them, said they would be paid info before 10:00 a.m. on December 29th, which I've done in the past. And so anyway, he called me several weeks before then and says, "We need you to go ahead and pay this." I says, "Well, I wanted to pay you off in May, but I, when I asked you how much it would reduce interest, they said not a penny." I said, "Why would I pay you, I don't think so." So anyway, we just left the money sitting there, we never used it. So anyway, that's what happened on it, and I'm so happy not to have a tax anticipation warrant. My goal when I first came in here was to do away with that, I was told that that would never happen, we couldn't do it.
You weren't told that by me?
No. But anyway, it's a good thing for the city.
Any further questions? If not, we'll move to unfinished business carried over from the previous meeting.
One other thing?
Yes.
Get an answer, let us know.
Okay, all right.
Unfinished business carried over from the last meeting. General Ordinance Number 10, 2017, is up for approval this evening on third and final reading. General Ordinance, uh, Number 10 is an ordinance that updates the parking ordinance for the City of Beach Grove. So with that, I'll ask for a motion to waive the rules and read the ordinance by title only.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
And then we will vote individually, beginning on my left.
Title only?
Title only.
Title only?
Title only.
Title only.
Title only.
Thank you. At this time, I'll ask the clerk to read into the record, General Ordinance Number 10, 2017, by title only.
General Ordinance Number 10, 2017, is an ordinance that amends Chapter 78 of the Code of Ordinances for the City of Beach Grove pursuant to parking motor vehicles.
Thank you. General Ordinance Number 10, 2017, is up for approval on third and final reading this evening. At this time, I'll ask for a motion to approve.
I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second a motion.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the same sign. Please register your vote. General Ordinance Number 11, 2017, is tabled for this evening. So we'll move to General Ordinance Number 12, 2017, is up for approval on second reading only. General Ordinance 12 is an ordinance that establishes a non-reverting operating fund for the Beach Grove Parks and Recreation. You should have received a new copy, there was a typo on the last page, the ordinance did not change, in the last disclosure, "It shall go into effect," effect was added, so it's not part of the ordinance. So at this time, I'll ask the clerk to read the ordinance into the record for second reading, please.
General Ordinance Number 12, 2017, is an ordinance that establishes the Beach Grove Parks and Recreation Department's Non-Reverting Operating Fund. Whereas the Parks Department desires to establish a separate fund to receive money, which is received from donation, proceeds from programs, sponsorships, and other fees collected, and whereas proceeds deposited into this fund will be used to offset programs, fees, and pay for services related to the program, and whereas the Parks Board desires that the Clerk Treasurer be responsible for receiving and depositing monies into this fund, and shall supply the Park Board with an accounting of such fund, and whereas the Parks Department over the past five years has enhanced its programming, equipment, grounds, and encourages community engagement, therefore be it affirmed that the common council has already approved a non-reverting fund for capital improvements, and now desires to establish a non-reverting fund to offset the cost of programming, therefore be it further affirmed that the common council desires the following language be inserted into Chapter 35 in the Code of Ordinance. Section 35.015, Fund Established. Pursuant to IC 36-10-4-16, the City of Beach Grove hereby creates and establishes a specific fund to be known as the Beach Grove Parks and Recreation Department Special Non-Reverting Operation Fund, and to which all monies and proceeds in the form of program and related fees, donations, and sponsorship fees to the City Parks and Recreation Department shall be deposited.
Hey Dan, this is, just a comment, first of all, I know that.
I'm not done reading.
You're not, oh, you're gonna, you're gonna read more of this?
Well, I guess.
Okay, go ahead.
Unless, that's what you wanted.
Please.
Does these other sections need to be read, no? Okay, go ahead.
Okay, Section 35.016, Purpose of the Fund. The primary purpose of the City Parks and Recreation Department's Special Non-Reverting Operation Fund is to collect and account for the program and related fees and sponsorship fees to operate park programs and provide increased accountability and ease of accounting for the revenues and expenditures related to the programs. Expenditures may include contractual amounts for the provision of programs, marketing, printing, and related services for programs and supplies, goods, and services related to programs offered through the Parks Department. Salary would be included so that the facility could be closed unless it was booked for a rental, in which this fund could help offset the staffing for the rental event. Section 35.017, Responsibility for the Fund. The Clerk Treasurer shall be responsible for receiving all funds to be deposited in such account, and shall keep records as to the amounts received, the manner of the receipt, any disbursements and current balance in such funds at all times. The Clerk Treasurer may delegate to the Programming and Recreation Director the City Parks and Recreation Department and other designees of the Parks and Recreation Department for the collection of revenues for immediate deposit. Section 35.018, Depositive Funds. Upon receipt of program and related fees or sponsorship fees from the Programming and Recreation Director or other designees of the City Parks and Recreation Department, the Clerk Treasurer shall make timely deposits of all program and related fees and sponsorship fees into the City Parks and Recreation Department's Special Non-Reverting Operation Fund. Section 35.019, Disbursement of Funds. The Parks Board and Clerk Treasurer are directed to only disperse funds from the Special Non-Reverting Operation Fund created hereunder upon receipt of a claim allowed and signed by the Park, the Board of Parks and Recreation for the purpose intended under this chapter. Section 35.020, Limitations on the Use of Funds. Any funds placed in the Special Non-Reverting Operation Fund may be expended only for the purposes for which the fund was created, including any program-related expense or contractual obligation to provide programs. Section 35.021, Non-Reverting. Revenues held within the Non-Reverting Operation Fund shall not revert to the general fund, but shall remain available for use from year to year for the purposes intended. Now therefore be it affirmed that the common council desires Chapter 35 to be inserted into the Code of Ordinances. Now therefore be it further affirmed that this ordinance only applies to Chapter 35 and the Code of Ordinances for the City of Beach Grove. Now therefore be it further affirmed that this ordinance shall go into, it's supposed to be effect 30 days after passage by the common council, signed by the council president pro temp, attested by the clerk treasurer, and signed by the mayor.
Thank you. General Ordinance Number, Buddy, did you have a question?
No, not now.
Okay. General Ordinance Number 12, 2017, is up for approval on second reading only this evening. This time, I'll ask for a motion to approve.
I'll make said motion.
I'll second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the same sign. We will hear this on third and final reading at the next council meeting, which is Monday, February the 5th, 2018, at 7:00 p.m. I put down here 6:00 p.m., for whatever reason, it's 7:00 p.m., so I apologize for that. That concludes unfinished business. Under new business, we have four items this evening. The first item is IPL Streetlight Recommendation, and council, back in October, IPL came before you, and with a program about converting our lights, streetlights, to LED over a three-year period, and it would cost the city about $100,000 a year for three years each, and then we could save between $25,000 and $30,000 per year. That was the nuts and bolts of their presentation. Tonight, I put it on new business to see if, what the recommendation the council has, and you have several recommendations. Number one is to go with what IPL recommends. Another recommendation you may come up with is to push it back a year. Another recommendation is to simply not do it at all. So I'll defer to the president pro temp for guidance on this, and I want to hear from what the council has to say, Buddy.
Well, I think that's probably be the good point, is anybody want to make their comment, reference the presentation. Vito, were you here for that meeting, or?
Yeah, I was here.
Okay, yeah, I remember, I remember you were now. Does anybody have any comments?
Yeah, I mean, I do.
Okay.
I mean, if you guys didn't know recently, the 20th IPL went to the IURC for another rate increase. IPL is owned by a conglomerate called AES. Their stock price went up 5% since that request for rate increase. It went from, well, I'm sorry, 4.3, it went from 10.46 to 10.88, closed out at 10.88 today. AES's CEO makes $3.25 million, their CFO makes one and a half million a year. 2016, their profits were $2.43 billion, 15, $2.58, 2014, $3 billion profit. Why are we paying $300,000 to put new lights up? So essentially, what IPL is asking for is for us to replace their roof, okay, and also charging us admission. Many people will call, many peoples' costs are already gonna go up, and people say, "Well, you know, you always cost, or increased costs always get passed on the customer." Well, let's look at Napoli's next door. About, three years ago, they had about $30,000 in improvements at restaurant. I could still go get $7 calamari over there every night, but you know, the difference is, the place is packed every night because they made it nicer. But the difference between IPL and Napoli is, IPL is the only Napoli in 50 miles. So not only do they want us to pay for their roof, now calamari is 10 bucks. So it just doesn't make sense. I mean, everybody says that's just how it is, well, why's it gotta be that way? That's my point.
Okay. Chris?
And I was gonna ask, who owns those lights? Do we own the light?
No, IPL owns them.
Why are, why do we pay to replace their lights?
Well, I would say that we pay for street lighting for safety.
Well, the electricity used by the streetlight, we pay for.
Mm-hmm.
But if a bulb burns out.
We also, we also.
Come on in, don't run down and replace that bulb.
We also pay, I think, for the, for each individual light.
Well, we don't pay for the light, it's owned by IPL, that's their asset. So what I'm saying is, we're fixing, it just doesn't make any sense to me. They're already going for a rate increase right now, so if we didn't replace the lights, do you think our rates would go down?
No.
Do you think they'll ever stay stagnant?
No, but in four years.
They say that the use of energy will go down.
Do you remember what the guy said?
Yeah.
"In four years, you'll have dark streets."
No, he didn't.
Well, here's your issue, though, talking about new lighting, we're talking about, what's the right word, it's, anybody help me, the new lights were gonna be, I don't have it in front of me, and I can't think of the word.
LED?
LED, yes. And we've seen the difference along Emerson Avenue with LED, and I'm just throwing out there that the problem will be is, they won't do anything. I'm not saying that Vito's comment shouldn't be weighed here, I don't mean that, but the point is, is they don't sound like they're going to move forward. So, yeah, we'll have lights until they go, and the problem down the road, and I know they got you where they got you, but here's the other problem.
But do we pay right now, Buddy? If a light burns out?
I believe we do, we pay for each light, am I right, Dan?
If we have a light installed right in front of City Hall tomorrow, we pay to have it installed.
No, my question is, is if the light that already exists in front of City Hall burns out, they replace that for free, right?
I believe they charge a maintenance facility fee.
Well, it's all wrapped up into our monthly fee.
Yeah, it's.
But I've seen the electric bill that comes in, and it says it's for the street lighting.
Yeah.
And it's, it's an energy bill, there's not a maintenance bill part of it, is there?
Not to my knowledge.
We've never gotten in maintenance for some repairs on, okay.
Not to my knowledge. Not to my knowledge.
I don't think we're getting charged maintenance, but they're just passing the cost along to us, so every time, you know, they go for a rate increase, that's where they're recouping their, their maintenance fees. What I, what I'm seeing is, Dennis, he didn't say we're gonna go in the black. What he said is, you're not gonna have to replace the bulbs, so you have to replace them. I really don't think IPL is gonna walk away how much revenue they're getting from us. They're not just gonna walk away from it. I mean, it'd say, well, sorry, you guys are gonna have to start using gas lamps. I just don't think that's gonna happen. IPL, as far as AESs, they're called, I did a little research on AES today. They're business units. IPL is their second or largest business unit in the United States. They're, they're a global company. But IPL is one of their biggest cash cows. So they're not gonna just let, what would be, four thousand homes go in the dark? I don't think they're gonna do that. They're trying to put us against a wall, and, I mean, we can either let them take our money and we'll still get our rates go up and save twenty-five, thirty grand in, over the long run, or just let them replace the lights on their own. That's, that's my opinion on it.
So can they come back and talk to us and have this discussion with them again?
I would, I would approach them on it. I'm gonna defer to the council, what the council wants to do.
I know when he was here, he talked about the lights that we have now, that they are going to quit making the lights that we have now.
Absolutely.
Just like they're gonna start quitting making the incandescent bulbs that we use in our homes. And they're all gonna go LED, and we've seen it, I know a lot of businesses, auto parts places that use the, the lights for their trouble lights and everything, they're having to go to LED because they cannot get the rough service bulbs anymore. So it's something that, you know, as far as us going black, you know, dark here in Beech Grove, it could happen if they can't find the bulbs to replace them.
Well, they're not.
They're replacing with the LED bulbs, they're gonna be charged for them anyway.
Do you think if the light goes out, who are they gonna call? They're gonna call Beech Grove, right? And you know what we're gonna tell them? We don't own the light, you need to call IPL.
Well, you want your residents stuck without lights, though?
It's, I think you guys are just letting this big company strong-arm us, and I think it's ridiculous. My opinion on it. I mean, the lights they put on on Main Street right now are horrible. I mean, you walk every ten feet and you're in the dark. We're already in the dark on Main Street. And it's not that bright on my street, the only streets on, lights on my street are at the corners. And the kids don't sit at the bus stop at night.
Well, and they couldn't tell us Indianapolis is doing this. So Indianapolis has four major intersections that go through, we've already paid for Emerson Avenue, which should have been Indianapolis responsibility.
But they also just got rid of moratorium on new streetlights.
But, but my thing is, do you wait and let them do Indianapolis pay for Sherman, Albany, and Churchman? See what's left?
Are they, are they going to do that?
The guy said-
They're responsible for it. That guy, I asked him that that night, and he said that-
Are we paying for anything in those areas? That all that you know of? Or you, probably hard to know what you're paying for sometimes.
We do, we pay the electric bill for the electric usage, but what they want us to pay for is new bulbs.
Well, they went, they went through and counted how many we needed, and I don't remember if, if no one asked the question as- But that wasn't, my, my question was, is do we know what lights we're paying for? Do we know if we are paying on Emerson or any of those? Because, you know, most things, that would be considered a county road, but-
Well, we definitely pay for Emerson Avenue.
Yeah.
I work for an engineering firm, that we deal with this all the time.
Oh.
Can he sign up to talk? Can we, are you in agreement?
No, he can, go ahead. Go ahead.
So what they're trying, what they're doing is LED, light fixtures for LED to retrofit, high-pressure sodium or whatever technology you have right now. The LED fixture is significantly more expensive than, than the old, the old systems. However, they are like eighty percent more efficient. So the, the idea is, you pay the upfront cost to swap out to the newer technology, but then you recoup that cost over life of the light because the LED light systems typically last fifteen to twenty years, where the high-pressure sodium lights only last five to eight years.
Yeah.
Depending on the technology that you go to. So that's the idea, is you pay the upfront cost, swap out the technology now, and then the sooner you do it, essentially, the, the more return on your investment you get.
But it's not our investment, it's theirs.
Right, but it's-
But your energy costs, so you're paying, you're paying an energy bill, so, so you pay a hundred dollars a month for your energy, when if you switch to LED tomorrow, you might be paying ten dollars a month on your energy. So that difference, that ninety dollars a month that you're not paying, essentially, after the three years, you will eventually return that investment. But that's the idea, is you make the initial investment now, to swap out to the new technology, and then over life of that light, well, you basically make your money back.
Is that to say that if we don't do it, they will eventually put the LEDs in?
Honestly, right now, it's basically, LEDs is new technology. All lights are going to LED just because they're highly efficient. States swapping out all their, I mean, every time we design an intersection, anything, we all, we automatically recommend LED. Even the initial investment's a little bit more, you make your money back.
It's gonna get cheaper, though.
It will get cheaper, but, but then you get to the point where the, the technology of the lights not being manufactured anymore, so-
Yeah.
Eventually, you're going, you're going to switch LED, so.
But I do remember him saying, for instance, like, we're paying, it was like a hundred and thirty bucks or something, a, a month a light, don't quote me on these numbers, but he specifically said that, like, our rate is still going up per light. It's just not gonna go up as much if we kept the, whatever the, the light we have now, the sodium light.
So that, that is correct. So let's say a high-pressure sodium consumes a hundred and eighty watts per second, and then the LED only consumes fifty watts per second. So you're paying eight dollars per watt per second. So this one's consuming a lot more over time than this one is. Your rate is the same for both, no matter what, but this one's consuming less than this one. So the longer you have those running, the, the difference in price.
Yeah, no, and I, that's usage, but that, that's when you start factoring in the maintenance and overhead, where your savings and the maintenance and overhead savings are only going to affect IPL. They're not gonna affect us.
Right, but you're only maintaining those lights, and that's, that's another advantage to the LED, the maintenance of the LEDs, they last so much longer than the high-pressure sodium or the other technologies out there that they're really not replacing them.
That's just, my debate is, is that there's gonna be savings for O and M, as I think, what's his name, Jeff like to call it. IPL is gonna get that savings, but the cost or the expense goes to us, but we don't get the savings. Our rate's still gonna go up. It's in, it's at IURC right now. The rate will never come down, so-
The IURC rate that they're asking for is for coal plant in, in Petersburg.
Okay, well, it's only a matter of time before they go back to the IURC. So what I'm saying is, if the rate's gonna go up, say they request a four percent rate increase, and we don't lay out the three hundred grand, we're only still going to be affected by the four percent rate increase, right?
Except for new bulbs, when we no longer can get to you.
Huh?
So you're, you're expecting them just to replace the bulbs intermittently as they fail?
It's their light. If they wanna keep making money off of a light, they're gonna replace the light.
I mean, have you seen that?
It depends on how, how the agreements are written. I, I can't speak to the operation names, I don't know.
Mayor, I have a suggestion. It, it seems like these questions ought to be forwardly asked right to-
Yeah.
Somebody with IPL maybe to-
You mean, have them come back?
I would say that'd be a good idea. That'd be my opinion, I don't-
I'll call them and have them come back and address it again.
Who would we talk to about adjusting the lights on Main Street?
I don't know.
Do you have a contact number?
I, that's, those are, I don't, Dan, you might have to help me with this. I don't think those fall under IPL.
I don't believe they do.
I think they're ours.
That was something that was purchased when we redid Main Street, and I have to agree with you, it's the worst lighting.
We should have put like six different models up down Main Street and seen-
Well, that was before, that was all designed and planned before us.
Oh, I know.
I think when they originally were planned on the agreement many years ago, because they were supposed to be lights, the front part and to the back part of it, and they were scrapped and only one light per pole, because they were looking for a certain amount of lighting, of course, and it didn't go that way because of financing, I guess, I don't know.
Yeah.
So basically, with that, with that project, in order to really change that, you have to either remove baffles, that's really the elevation of the light is what's gonna make the biggest difference.
Okay, the spread, everything.
Yeah. Change up the styles, it's height, so it makes a difference.
I don't think any of us disagree from the technology on these LED, the, the way they burn, the clear, how they burn, how evenly they are when they, from what I have read and looked at, come from the pole, so, I mean, there's no question that it's night and day. Yep, that wasn't too bad of an analogy, was it? But I think, just, we can keep talking, or maybe it'd be good to throw those same questions. Maybe we'd learn something if we ask IPL some harder questions when they come here.
I'll call them, I'll get ahold of them, see if they'll come back out and, and talk with us.
What's your name, sir?
I'm Andrew Wolfe, Crossroads Engineers.
Okay.
Okay.
We'll move to the next order of business, RDC appointments for two thousand eighteen. The council has two appointments to the redevelopment commission. Your appointments last year were Don Webb and Jay Oswald. Don has told me that he would like to continue to serve on the RDC. Jay has, is moving to Greenwood and would no longer be eligible to serve. So I'll defer to the Pro Tem for direction on this, on these appointments.
Well, we know that Jay, he, he is moving, leaving the community. One kind of bad thing about the, the RDC over the past, and I know may have to agree, but over the past twenty years, there seem to be a lot of move away. So I hope that, I don't believe that has anything to do personally with our city, it deals with their families, but so forth. As the mayor said, Don Webb's interested in serving again, he's on there, but even with that, the council needs to come up with another name as well. I don't know if we're prepared to do two names tonight, but I think we ought to start with the, at least the appreciation to, or respect to put Don Webb's name out here for a vote for the council at this time. Does anybody wanna make a motion for Don Webb?
I'll make a motion for Don to be back on the RDC.
I wanna make a, a comment. There is a lot of things I don't agree with with Don, and there's a lot I do, but one thing I do know, in talking to members of his committee, that they certainly do respect the work he does. So I wanted to make that comment. All right, there's a first and a second. All those in favor reappointing Don Webb signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Seems like there's no opposition. Mayor, Don Webb is there, and I don't know how you wanna carry on for a-
Does anyone have any, anyone who you wanna recommend?
Um, there was a gal that, her name is Amanda Rubadu. She had, she was at the November meeting with her husband. She is interested in serving as well, but she could not be here tonight. So I suspect she'll be here in February, so you can talk with her.
Okay. And I would suggest if anybody else also has anybody they know of that wants to serve on this committee, be good to get in touch with them, maybe have them here as well.
What was it, Dan Baby ran for last year?
EDC.
EDC, oh, yeah, that's right.
Okay, then, we've concluded RDC. The next order of business for the council this evening is you have three appointments to the local BZA. Your appointments are Don Whalen, Julie Weaver, and Diana Hendricks. I have spoken with all three of those folks, and they are all three interested in continuing on the BZA. So I'll defer to the council Pro Tem.
Well, those are the three, and they're all willing to come back. Does anybody want in discussion on any three of these? We can do them all at one time?
I think we can do them all at one time.
I'll make a motion to nom, renominate these three women, Diana Hendricks, Julie Weaver, and Don Whalen.
Second.
And Diana Hendricks. Did you, you might have said that, I didn't hear.
I said it.
Okay. There's a first and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
And those opposed? And that takes care of that.
All right. I think in your packet, in the last meeting, I put a note in there from the downtown Metropolitan Development, where they have, they're going to reappoint Rick Greenfield and Kathy Arsenal as their representatives on our local BZA for two thousand eighteen. So that board is set. We'll go from there. The last order of new business tonight is conflict contracts and nepotism forms, and I'll defer to the clerk to go through the process. Dan?
Okay. We'll do the conflict of interest forms first, and I'll just read the names, and then we can vote on them as a group. First, Jim Brooks. Second, myself, Dan McMillan. Third is David Harrison. Fourth is Sandy Seward. And fifth is Lynn Recowig. Them's all the conflict of interest.
Any questions or discussion?
Yeah, what are we voting on?
Conflict of interest forms.
I know, but what do you-
You're approving their disclosure.
So just the fact that they've disclosed that they have other dealings with the city?
Correct. This is something that we do every year. The conflict of interest forms actually have to be sent to two places, fifteen days after you guys approve them. Clerk of the Circuit Courts and Indiana State Ethics is the other one. But anyway, these are the only ones that had to be sent away, other than, the next two that we do are kept in office here locally.
Any other questions or comments? If not, ask, if not, I'll ask for motion to approve the conflict forms that the clerk read into the record.
I'll make said motion.
I'll second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the same sign. Go ahead, Dan, continue.
Okay, the next ones are contracts. First person is Sandy Seward, Dennis Buckley, Dan McMillan, David Harrison, Elizabeth Lamping, Andrew Wells, and I think that's all of it.
Again, help me understand, what, what contracts do these individuals have?
Okay, like, for example, Dave is on the Board of Works, Dennis on the Board of Works. They approve contracts with crossroads engineers, any of the street projects, any contract in the city goes through the Board of Works. Some of these others may have a conflict, like Sandy Seward's son works for the Parks Department.
I can understand the conflict, but the contracts, I don't understand what I'm approving on your ability to approve a contract through crossroads.
Well, in other words, there are, a, a lot of times where there's been some issues, you see them in the newspaper, where someone is getting kickbacks, whatever. So this way here, they're disclosing that they have something to do with contracts within the city. Not that they're doing anything wrong.
I'm kinda like with Chris, I understand the-
Maybe I filled that out by mistake.
Yeah.
Well, that's all right. You're better to have it than not have it.
Those, you were next up on that, I was gonna ask you what, what you had, but-
I was, Drew, oh, never mind, I was, thought I was supposed to fill them out and-
But I agree with Chris, I, I certainly understand the Sandy Seward situation, but as a, as Board of Works, I was, I'm kinda surprised that that's a legal body because the mayor has the right to appoint.
What's gonna change if we don't vote on that?
Exactly.
No, I thi, I think it's, it's a transparency issue.
Well, I understand that, but I don't think we have to vote. Do we? I mean, you guys are gonna go ahead and approve the bills at the next meeting for the, we vote on this or not.
Well, let me, let me read Indiana Code right here, it's not real long, and maybe this will help you. It's Indiana Code thirty-five dash forty-four dash one dash three. A public servant who knowingly or intensely has a pecuniary interest in or derives a profit from a contract or purchase connected with an action by the governmental entity served by the public servant commits conflict of interest, a class D felony, uh, wait a second, I grabbed the wrong one. Sorry about that.
You can pull mine out of there.
Okay. Oh, this one is long. This is like two or three pages, but anyway, it's contracting with the unit and so forth. I don't think you want me to read this whole thing.
So it makes sense if the mayor, Sandy, and Dave would sign one, because they're part of the Board of Works.
Yeah, but my, I think my-
Right. Well, and I could even see like Brad, you know, he might need to do something like that, I don't know. like that, and I don't know.
I'll, I'll vote for it, I still don't understand it, because.
I think really, it's a, why is this, is protecting you, and Dave and Sandy and the mayor, if the case something comes up, you know, at least you, you have a knowledge that you are involved with the contracts.
I don't think the council needs to approve it, but I think the mayor put it on the agenda, so we're doing, it's transparent to everybody.
That's why, I, I agree. I'll, I'll vote for it, but I don't, I don't think it holds any merit. It might for Sandy, because she actually has someone who works for the city.
But that's for her conflict of interest, I don't understand the contract part.
That's conflict of interest, yeah. But I don't know, I, I agree with you, the contract part, I, but, someone could say wasn't.
And, and more along the lines, you're talking about nepotism with Sandy.
True.
More so than conflict of interest.
Well, she still approves contracts, every contract that goes.
You gotta remember her. Unless she is approving a contract that she has a stake in that business, I don't think that.
But the contract could, could hook up with her, something to benefit her own son working for the city, so.
Or herself.
Yeah, well, we could all do that.
Well, that, that's.
We wouldn't.
That's the reason for these forms stating that.
That's why I thought you were gonna point out, I guess that's the reason.
Well, I, I just say, I'd say move on, and that's, that's a proven, I don't have any issues with any of them.
Thanks for being transparent, Mayor.
Yeah, okay.
Dan, what would be the motion? Was, is that for the contracts?
This one is for the contract certification, yes.
Motion to approve the contract certifications on the, on the folks listed, uh, by the clerk.
I make a motion to be approved.
I'll second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the same sign. And the last one, Dan?
The last one is nepotism, and, uh, for anybody that's not sure what that is, that's where you have an employee where you're direct supervision, whatever, a relative that works for the city. Uh, the first one I got is Brad Meriwether, uh, Chad Seward, um, Matt Maurice, Dennis Buckley, Sandy Seward, Cindy Lee White, Bruce Giffen, Dave Harrison, Chris Harrison, Elizabeth Lamping, Tina White, Andrew Wells.
There's a, a nepotism rule that came into play after, was it January first of two thousand and twelve?
Yep.
That municipalities have to disclose if you are an elected or appointed official, if you have, or if there's an employee that, that, uh, is related to another employee. So I think that's a good law. And, uh, we just, we are just being totally transparent with this.
It can't be in the direct line of supervision. That's, that's the key issue there. So Dan could. Well, then I'll make a motion and we approve all of those.
I'll second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the same sign. That concludes new business for this evening. Council comments beginning on my left.
I think it's kinda silly, Uncle Dennis, but, uh, that was, that was my joke from the end.
Cousin?
I do wanna, I wanna make a comment about Beth Berg and, um, that I think everyone knows that she's a very smart individual, and she's had things to do in the past with, uh, um, even being involved in getting some, uh, grants. Uh, her grant writing was, uh, very well done, um, and, uh, she's gonna be leaving. She's been with the Parks Department and then also serving, uh, with the Greenscape, and I just wanted to, uh, tell her thank you, if anywhere that gets out or have it in the record of, uh, her good service, and I know and hope she'll continue to offer some good advice, uh, to the city whenever we can ask her for it. Um, the clerk, once again, just the tax anticipation warrant, uh, the lack of one, uh, is certainly a money-saving and also a good stance for the city, which represents, uh, um, the city in probably a good light that we can move forward without having to borrow money. And I also wanted to make a con, earlier I was gonna ask you if you were gonna read the rest of it, and then that's when I made the joke earlier on one of your things. But one of the things I wanna say about an issue that happened last council meeting, you and Dan Norris had a discussion, and, uh, part of it was emails and so forth, but you, uh, you two, from what I've gathered from both sides, had a good conversation, and Dan did, uh, uh, allude that there was, uh, that he didn't send any emails, but better than that, you two had a good conversation about the parks, and I just wanted to say, uh, good job on that, Dan. Just two other things real quickly, and Chris Duffer and Vito Maschere. Um, one thing about Chris is, and, and I talk to him every once in a while, and one thing that's funny in this council, I'll give some transparency, myself, Chris, and Liz Lamping all work for, uh, Franciscan Health, and, um, so sometimes it's easy to run into each other, and, and Chris and I work in the same building, but I wanted to say that his ability to, um, like, he got in touch with the mayor for a one-on-one on trying to help a situation, and it worked out good on everybody's behalf, and sometimes, boy, what a way to do it, is just talk to the person, then get involved that way versus, we're in a world of Facebook, and, you know, you can't go to a restaurant where someone didn't like it, and Chris's ability to how you handled the situation, and not just that one, many others, I just, I appreciate it as a citizen. And Vito, you remind us, uh, remind me that sometimes that you just don't lay down. Um, you, you tackle things head-on, and you certainly could make me think, so I just wanted to say, uh, you are, tonight, and whether you're right or wrong, whatever you say, you're tackling something, taking it head-on as a counselor's counselor, I tell you, so thank you. Um, and with that, well, I wanna do something the mayor said earlier, that thanking the city employees, and also making a, a bigger deal with the Public Works, 'cause sometimes they just don't, they don't get any attention, and I'll tell you what, if they go home, people will complain. Through this weather, uh, the city of Beech Grove, um, continued to do its job without missing anything, and these guys working in bad conditions and probably for the rest of this winter are gonna have those kind of conditions, and I do know police and fire do the same, and other members too, but just a heads up right now, or, uh, thank you for the Public Works, and the mayor's already done that, uh, in thanking them. With that, uh, I'll shut up. Thanks.
I'd just like to thank everybody who showed up tonight, and, uh, stay warm.
Buddy pretty much said everything I was going to, thanks a lot.
All right. You want me to say it again, or?
Can we change and vote on President Pro-TAM?
Yeah, I knew you talked too much. You're a good man, Dan, what the heck. But, uh, I, I do appreciate what these guys do out there, it's not just the DPW. I seen police out today, and I thought, oh my God, I wouldn't be out there for nothing. I mean, that, that was, it was cold today, and these guys get out there, rain, sleet, or hail, so, and God bless them, I guess, that's all I got.
Vito? Uh, just look forward to continuing the discussion from tonight. Um, Dan, thanks for everybody coming out.
And let's get home, get warm.
I just wanna recognize and congratulations to Jim Kaufman for the Southside Times Person of the Year, well deserved. Jim works just, uh, behind the scenes in so many ways, uniting the businesses on Main Street. He's involved in so many different areas to improve and, and promote good progress for our city, so congratulations to Jim Kaufman, uh, Southside Times Person of the Year.
Chris?
I'd like to reflect Buddy's comment concerning Vito. Uh, that's, that's what a counselor's supposed to do, look out for the money, the money for the citizens, and I appreciate that, thank you.
Thanks, Chris.
Um, I also likewise appreciate what our public servants do, the police and the fire and the DPW. Um, I know it is cold and it's, sometimes it's difficult, but we're grateful. Um, and Buddy was right about the mayor, the mayor worked with me on an issue, and we, uh, got that resolved, and I was very grateful for that, so that's all I have.
All right, thank you. Couple things, uh, in your packet, uh, that I wanna point out to you, is that, uh, we applied for some more funding through the, uh, NDOT and MPO, uh, Phase Two of the Greenway, um, Thompson Road Sidewalk Project, and a, what they call a complete street project through, uh, on Elm Street from Fourth to Ninth Avenue. So we should be hearing from, uh, NDOT and the MPO sometime in February to see how we come out on these, uh, requests, but that's in your packet for your review, if you haven't seen it. Um, been working for the last couple months with a company called Viavi. Uh, they're out on, uh, Fifty-Eight Hundred Block of Churchman Bypass, and, uh, they sent me a, uh, email that I included in your packet. Uh, they have, uh, bought out their competitor, Trilath, and, um, they didn't know whether they were going to bring that company to Beech Grove or move themselves to where Trilath is. So, uh, they've decided to move that company to Beech Grove, so, uh, probably by June of, uh, this year, they will have, uh, the company here, and, uh, uh, that's good news for us, it's about forty to fifty jobs that's come to Beech Grove. So, uh, we're working with them, and, uh, as more comes up with that, I'll pass it on to you folks. In your packet that I gave to you was the meeting minutes of the last meeting concerning, uh, the downtown grant, planning grant, and, uh, our work with Shrewsbury and the, uh, next stop Beech Grove, so that's in there. And then, um, the Board of Works is going to hear a proposal from, um, a couple of utility location, uh, companies. We're going to have to start, when we do construction projects, we're going to have to start locating sewers, sanitary sewers, um, within the construction, um, so that's getting ready to come, uh, come down the pike. That's a, uh, a, uh, I don't know what you wanna call it, it comes from the Indiana Utility Regulatory Commission in NIPSCO. Uh, so that's, when more of that comes out, we'll, uh, I'll pass that information on to And then, um, the last thing, in your packet, please read the, uh, stamped draft, it's Beech Grove Fire Department Emergency Medical Services Request. Please read that, because I wanna bring that up at the next meeting, um, because we're going to embark on, uh, expanding, uh, our, uh, EMS capabilities with community paramedicine, but also I wanna talk to you about adjusting the ambulance rates for this year. So please read that, and then at the February meeting, I'll have the chief come up and give you a presentation on, on where we're gonna go with this, and, uh, uh, it's gonna make our service even better to the citizens of Beech Grove, plus it's gonna provide another way for us to generate more revenue, non-taxable revenue, so, tax dollar revenue, so please read that, and then I'll, it'll be on the agenda for February. So having said that, uh, uh, that concludes the comments, I'll ask for a motion to adjourn.
Make a motion to adjourn.
I'll second.
The meeting is adjourned at eight oh five PM. We will convene again on February the fifth in these chambers at seven PM.